I thought it was a really great idea and we're gonna kick that off tonight. With one of our long-term members, City Councilman Josh Belladino is here. And we're gonna have a City Council live workshop, okay? So, some of the members that brought this to my attention, yeah, you know, we don't... Does everyone here know exactly what City Council does? Does everyone here know what the Road Commission does, the County Commissioners do? No, I mean, I for one don't. I've never been to a City Council meeting, I live in the city. So this is, you know, these educational sessions, you know, with folks like Josh coming up here in a minute to speak on this. Give us some insight and give us a point of contact if we have questions. Because, you know, we're not standing on the sidelines. You know, we're here tonight, we're learning, we're trying to get better at what we're doing. But folks that, you know, are here tonight, they live in the city, you know, we need to be off the sidelines of the city. We need to be off the sidelines of the County Commissioners, you know? Those are things that we need to kind of put our thumb on, we need to forward to, you know, make a difference. Because we don't go and our voices aren't heard, you know, it's all the opposite. Anyway, so give a warm welcome to Josh Belladino.
Hi. I've seen most of you all before, mentioned you all before, but I'm Josh Belladino. Lived in Hillsdale for ten years now, was raised in Canton, Michigan, met Detroit, came here for college in 2018 and decided this was my speed of life, not going back to the traffic and all the craziness of that part of the state. I graduated from Hillsdale College with my doctorate in politics, studying political philosophy. I studied political philosophy there, wrote my dissertation on C.S. Lewis, but I've been increasingly interested in municipal politics. It's a neglected area of scholarship among academics. And, you know, we feel that all the states are at the federal and the state level. Was not the case during the American founding and through a lot of the history of the United States. But by neglecting local political power, local political authorities, you tend to sort of naturally allow power to accumulate upward. Okay, this is a threat because the major revolutions in world history happened actually after power is accumulated upward, not before. So the French Revolution happens after power is taken away from the townships. They're parish governments and it moves upward. And then the federal head has more ability to take authority. So that's why I'm interested in this. I figured I'd just talk through some of the major issues we're facing in the City Council. And I think during that discussion, you'll sort of understand the process of City Council, what we're doing. And if you have questions, we can get to those at the end. Tell me if I'm speaking too long or when things are not addressed. So on the academic side of things, I'm researching the changes in local government. At the turn of the century, about 1907, there was a massive transformation of local government. The introduction of the County Commissioner system at the local level. The interesting thing about the County Commissioner system is that there is no separation of powers like there is at the federal and state level. This was a progressive innovation, this was intentional. The idea was that you would invest all executive legislative and judicial authority in one body. And you create a sort of administrative tyranny. They're not, and please, I'm speaking academically, okay? So I'm not making any claims about particular people, simply about the structure of government. You have a situation in which there is no legislative body, an executive authority, and judicial authority. They exercise all of those powers. So the temptation there is that they become administrative tyrants, right? They make all of the decisions themselves, there's no checks and balances. Under the Michigan Constitution of 1850, the county board supervisors was, I believe, eighteen members. Okay, and then there was a county executive too, that they would elect from their body. So you had separation of powers. Same with City Council Government. There used to be an elected executive that had real executive authority. Today, we have a mayor that is elected, but is essentially a member of City Council with very limited authority. And of course, we don't have a municipal board, those were abolished also in the 1960s. So the Michigan Constitution of the 1960s is very bad. It's a product of the progressive and liberal era and it's given us some dangers in local government. Okay, so I'll spare you all too many more academic details, but I just wanted to let you know that's what... That's the research I'm looking into now and I want to make this a key issue of concern for people like professors at Hillsdale College to understand that local government is deserving of our attention. Okay, so I'll go through some of the issues that may be designed to run. The biggest one is special assessments, okay? The city government is supposed to maintain our local streets. I believe we have fifty-four miles of internal streets in the city of Hillsdale. Some of these are administered like Broad Street in Carlton by MDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, the rest are ours. Okay, due to mismanagement in our government for decades, the roads are crumbling. Our city government thought that the best way to fix this solution, right, a genius solution, you tax more, okay? Not exactly, you know, done with the finite, just sort of, well, let's raise more money. So what happens is when your road is going to be fixed in the city of Hillsdale, they come to you and hit you with a $5,000 bill, all at once. Okay, this is for a city where I believe the average tax payment is something like $3,000 a year. Right, but if you live in an $80,000 home and you're only paying two grand in taxes a year and all of a sudden you're hit right away with a $5,000 assessment, it can be damaging. The other difficulty is that if you don't pay the $5,000 upfront, you're charged interest on that over the next ten years. The payment ends up being about $6,800 over those ten years. And the money, the assessment is actually put as a lien on your property. So it's coercive, I believe, and it's the worst sort of taxation. Because taxation, when it's just, should be regular and it should be approved by the voters. Okay, so what I mean by regular is that you should basically know what's coming. We never like when our property taxes go up three percent year over year, but we at least know what's coming. Okay, this sort of comes out of nowhere, it catches people unaware. The other issue is that if you want to oppose the special assessment, the residents don't authorize it beforehand. Instead, the City Council tells them, hey, we're gonna have a special assessment. If you want to oppose this, you have to have half of the people who will be affected by a petition in writing that they oppose the assessment. If they pass it, if those people come forward, then the City Council can still override their desires with the two-thirds vote of the council, they can still raise their tax. Okay, so I would like to see this mechanism either stop being used or simply removed from the powers of the city altogether. So that was one of the main issues. One of the main reasons that I want to change this is that we actually have the money. We have a $3.3 million surplus that came during the COVID era from, you know, savings from not having the same services during that era. And the special assessments only amount to about $125,000 to $150,000 per project. The St. Joe's project, for example, was one, as well as the Highland and Fairview project over on the west side of the state, or the west side of the city, excuse me. Okay, so I would like to use those funds to pay for that. But the city feels that we should continue to levy the special assessments. Okay, the other issue was the library. This is a very hot topic. I got in trouble because I said that we should not have books in the children's section that discuss sex or politics. You know, four to nine-year-olds, if they're gonna discuss those things at all, which they probably, at least I wouldn't with my kids, that's something that should be done with parents. So I just said, you know, they said this was a right-wing fascist takeover, of course. But it's just a simple rule, we don't discuss sex or politics with kids. You don't go up to a kid at a park and say, what do you think of Donald Trump, right? You don't do that. Politics is for adults, because we're the ones that vote and hold office. The library is doing fairly well now. We have a good director and we haven't seen anything objectionable come through. And we also got an $800,000 gift from a gentleman who passed away. So we are doing good financially and I believe we're operating well. Lots of good things going on there, reading groups, crafting groups, all that sort of stuff. So take advantage of the local library, including the events. Okay, the other thing I want to talk about is the Galloway Street project. I have a lot of mixed feelings about this. The college is going to take Galloway Street, we voted on Tuesday to vacate Galloway Street so that the college can build a hotel there. It's gonna be about a 150-room hotel. In exchange, the college is giving us $2 million. $1.7 million endowment with the Hillsdale County Community Foundation and $300,000 cash payments over the next three years. And this should really cushion our budget. I would like to see the City Council, and maybe this is something where people could get involved, especially if you live in the city, come and say, look, the college has finally started to contribute to city government. We need to give this immediately as relief to taxpayers, end the special assessments, reduce taxes if possible. Our taxes in the city of Hillsdale are the second highest in the county, behind the city of Jonesville. And people are shocked, people come from eastern cities, you know, cities on the coast. They would think are liberal and they say, my taxes are higher here as a percentage of my home value. Okay, and part of that is because we're trying to make up for the mismanagement of government over the years. The college, as you know, does not have to pay taxes, property taxes, because it's a nonprofit entity. This means that our largest employer in the city of Hillsdale does not pay property taxes. This is a state statute, it's not our decision. The state defines who receives nonprofit benefits. But it creates a situation in which the post-industrial Midwest has difficulty raising taxes except on its residents. So ideally, your tax base would be large businesses. We're paying a $20,000 tax if you're a large business, not gonna hurt you as much. But paying these taxes, drawing them only for our residents is part of the reason that taxes have gotten so high. Okay, so this is a sort of structural issue that we maybe need to talk with our representatives about, right? The hospital doesn't pay taxes in the same way. Now, in a way, this makes sense. Education and health are very important. But you're also, as citizens, as taxpayers, trying to educate your kids, trying to ensure the health of your children. What household is for profit? Right, are you raising your kids for a profit? No, you're sinking a lot of money into them and then they're gonna be irritated at you from about 18 to 22. And then they're gonna come back and hopefully love you, but still. Okay, so I just find this whole structure irritating, but I want you to know that this is not something the city can do, but it's something that we're trying to work around as best as we can. I would also like to talk about energy. The state legislature has said that we must be 50% carbon neutral by 2030, 100% carbon neutral by 2040. This is gonna apply to the Hillsdale more to public utilities. Okay, the BPU is better managed than it was a few decades ago. Any of you who've been around here, you know the stories there, mismanagement and corruption. But we have, in the state of Michigan, about 12% carbon-neutral energy sources. So in the next six years, we'll have to get up 38% as a state. The city is, I think, a little better positioned, we're more like 15% to 18%. These energy sources are twice the cost of our current natural gas energy sources. Okay, primarily natural gas, we do use some diesel, we do some geothermal, we do some hydroelectric, okay? One of the main difficulties with the shift to carbon neutrality is that we're not actually focusing on energy sources, frankly, that are good for the environment. Geothermal is a fairly solid energy source. Our leaders don't care about it, right? You can look up Singapore, very interesting little city-state there. They burn all their garbage, purify the burden of garbage, right, with these high-quality air filters, and they use it to power their cities. Okay, so we could go that route, but we don't. We put up windmills that destroy our natural environment. We couldn't go the route of hydroelectric, electric, an ancient energy source that can be used in a way that's compatible with wildlife and habitat management. We don't go that route, we go solar, which destroys our habitats and requires both human slavery and the use of the earth in order to get these materials to build the solar farms. Hey, they're forcing this on us. We had a vote that came up to build a solar farm in, I believe, St. Joseph County that would be... That would contribute to us. I voted against this. But it's hard to see exactly what our alternatives are unless our state representatives change course, realize the utter foolishness of this. I mean, we're talking California rolling blackout-style territory in the next decade in the state of Michigan, where we have abundant natural resources. It's insanity. Okay, so I don't know... The difficulty is, if I keep voting no and we don't go along with this, the City Council voted yes, but I voted no, they're gonna come punish us, right? So the question is, do we say no, do we resist and risk future punishment? Or do we go along with these things that are bad for mankind, bad for the earth, bad for plants and animals? And expensive, right? They threaten to double our energy bills in the next 10 to 15 years. Okay. I'll just comment on a few more things, because I've already taken about fifteen minutes. We have a few issues with the budget that we are making some progress on solving. Okay, so our main budget items are police and fire. These are about, I believe, $2.8 million. And we only take in about $2.2 million in property tax revenue a year. So we're already dependent on state and federal grants for everything we do. Okay, but then a few funds... Okay, so I believe the purpose of government is protection. That's the simplest way to put it. The government exists to protect us. Anything it does that does not protect us is illegitimate. So police and fire are part of that. Now, local government also does, you know, preserves our land, provides recreation, so those things can be good too. But we have other funds, and I'll just mention two. The Dial-A-Ride, City Transportation Service. This was started, I believe, in about the 1960s, that critical era in American history. It's now running $130,000 deficit. We spend more on Dial-A-Ride from our own funds than we do on local streets. For sixty years, when I ran for council, I said, "City Council's on autopilot, we don't have people looking into a lot of these things." And I was laughed at, oh, everyone's got it managed. Dial-A-Ride rates did not increase for sixty years. Inflation over that time is 100%, essentially. Depending on how, whether you engage inflation like the federal government does and say, "Well, TVs are cheaper, so we're all better off." Well, a gallon of milk is $5.
Yeah, right.
So, okay, I don't know what your budget is like, but I'm not buying big screen TVs ever again. Okay, so one way we've done this, and this is hard on people, right? We've said, okay, we gotta start catching this up. But we can't have, you know, 100% increase, we gotta do this slowly. So we're phasing it in, we're trying to get that budget item down so that we can contribute primarily toward the things that are the essential services of government, right, protection. The other fund is the airport. The college uses, according to the airport manager, about 60% to 70% of all airport services. The college, of course, as I said, does not pay property taxes. This leaves, we do charge for services, but we're still running about $120,000 deficit. That means that we are taking from property taxpayers what they pay into the general fund and shifting it to the airport. Now, if you go and knock on 100 doors in Hillsdale, 100% of people will say, do you want... If you ask them, "Do you want to contribute to the airport?", is that what you expect your property taxes to go towards? They will say, "I didn't know my property taxes were going toward that." Or if they do, they'll be irritated. Okay, so these are the sort of issues. And I'm gonna try to work with the City Council to reach budget, a budget-neutral territory. Okay, we're in a place that we can't sell the airport because of stipulations of federal grants, and maybe we wouldn't even want to do that. But what we cannot do is take tax money to support these sorts of things, okay? The people want their taxes to go towards roads, police, and parks. That's basically it, right? If we can do other things like Dial-A-Ride without taking ahead to the budget, okay, that's fine. I'm not gonna try to eliminate those things, of course, because they help senior citizens, right? They provide, you know, wheelchair-accessible transportation, that sort of stuff, right? The airport apparently supports some of the executives at Meyer, at the hospital, at the college. Okay, so we can do that, but the key is we cannot spend taxpayer dollars on these things. So that's, those are some of the budget items that I'm working on and there are more that I could talk about. It's funny, as we are spending these massive amounts on Dial-A-Ride and the airport, we just had a long discussion about council, at council, about how we have to raise the fee to park at Sandy Beach to $10 from $5. Okay, so this is the sort of things, they wanna nickel-and-dime us over our Sandy Beach admissions fee to make a few thousand dollars more a year while we're throwing money at things that are not the essential services of the government. And the last thing I'll say, also not directly city-related, is crime. Crime is increasing in Hillsdale County and sentencing is getting more lenient. It's not clear if we should blame the prosecutor, the judge, or the state legislature. The state legislature has passed sentencing guidelines that essentially tell prosecutors and judges not to put people in prison for violent crimes. I don't know if you're all aware of the Camden pot shop robbery and car chase? Yeah? Those guys were sentenced. They drove down from Kalamazoo, robbed a store in Hillsdale County, took the police on a three-county chase through two states, and they got a time served. An armed robbery. This is the sort of situation that we have. Meanwhile, if you look at the, you know, the county arrest records, the bond listings on the Hillsdale County Information Station, you see that we're putting people in prison for far less offenses in some cases. Okay. I think that's about all I had to say. Oh, the campaigns, yes, the practical issue. Okay, November election, there are four seats up in the City Council, so the City Council is a nine-member board. One mayor, eight city councilmen, two from, city council members, two from each ward. So four are up every two years. And in Ward Four, which is this portion of the city, Rob Soha is running on post. In Ward One, Tony Beer is running against Jacob Brunz. In Ward Two, this direction, Matt Bentley is running on a post. I've made acquaintances with him, made a friendship with him, he seems pretty solid, sounds like he'll be good to work with. And then in Ward Three, probably the big race, you've probably seen the signs for it, Matthew Niffen versus Bob Flynn. We don't really know what Bob Flynn thinks, but it seems like he's probably gonna be relatively a status quo guy, simply because we haven't heard anything. Matt has put out a platform, he spoke here, he's who I'm supporting. So those are the campaign issues that are coming up. If any of you want to reach out to me to help with door knocking or contributions, that would be fantastic. Thanks for letting me take a bunch of your time, talking about my issues.
First one would be easy, you said it's 50/50 on the hotel for Hillsdale College.
50/50?
Is that what you, I thought that's what you said, you were kinda...
Oh...
Six more I have to...
I didn't finish that thought. Part of my issue is that because I'm skeptical of the whole nonprofit system, I don't like, and you know, I have to say, I have to be kind. I don't like that it came to this issue of us having to vacate and give them a public street for them to contribute to the city.
What is, what extortion is... What are they doing with the streets? Are they like utilizing them only on the campus for the hotel, or are they...
It will be gone, Galloway will no longer be a through street. The hotel will actually be built where the street currently is. It's a huge hotel, 150 room, it's massive, so yeah, it's actually taking up the street. So the reason I said I'm 50/50, of course, I want this contribution. A $2 million endowment means we'll be able to draw over $100,000 per year from that endowment. We could even reinvest some of it and try to grow the fund. My ultimate goal is, we would take that money, maybe even some of the money we have in the surplus, put it in an endowment, start getting annual returns, and then give that back to the people in tax cuts, right? So we get a self-sustaining fund, we grow it, and maybe in a couple generations, we hand over a city to our kids where their property taxes are as low as possible, right? So that's my goal, but of course, a lot of people in politics want to keep the machine going.
You say "we", but who's drawing the money?
The City Council.
Who's gonna get that money and control where it's gonna go?
The City Council will, but it will be in the hands of the Hillsdale County Community Foundation. The reason is that municipal investments are restricted by state law. So state statute requires that municipalities only invest in funds that do not risk the principal. So we can invest in treasury bonds, CDs, money market accounts, that sort of stuff. But if you have money in those, you know that they are now performing below inflation, actually. And of course, this is the case because the Federal Reserve targets a 3% inflation rate, right? They target a 3% tax every year, and so the bonds, the treasury notes cannot actually give you a return. So we gave it to the community foundation, or I didn't have anything to do with the negotiations. The people who negotiated this gave it to the community foundation because they can invest and hopefully get us a 7% or greater return in the future. But we will be able to draw from the fund, only the City Council, yeah.
So they get to decide where the money's gonna go to?
That's right.
So they could just give it away to somebody or use it on another project if they want to, or whatever they would like?
That's why I was a little bit upset with the way this was done. I would have liked to see, before we even agreed to vacate the street, before we agreed to anything with the city, we knew exactly what restrictions were gonna be placed on that fund. This can be used for roads, police, parks, something like that. And they will go directly into a city fund, they're not gonna be used to hire new people, they're not gonna be able to use to increase salaries. They're gonna be able to be used to pay for those services, essential, or hopefully, to actually eliminate the taxes that would otherwise be used or raised and those things. So I would have liked to see the agreement be structured like that. Look, we're gonna take this money, and the moment we take it, we are saying we will never raise another special assessment. But we didn't get that type of guarantee.
So you told us the things that you have to make decisions on, but can you tell us what your average day at work entails and how many hours a week that you put in?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So, really part-time job, we get about $1,200 a year. I think it's about $100 a month, so very part-time. You can put in no work a month. You can show up, we have City Council meetings, the first and third Monday of every month at 7:00 PM. They're about an hour and a half to two hours apiece. Other than that, you can do nothing. Okay, I get emails from constituents, so I try to assist them, that's another main thing that I do. CJ here, right? We pass a policy, okay, here's one of the main difficulties with City Council. We aren't engaged in any of the administrative decisions, right? We hire a permanent staff that makes administrative decisions. But if you have a business that operates like this, you know that administration ends up being authority, right? We're just administrators. It can't really operate like that. Once you are the master of the facts on the ground, you end up crafting policy by proxy. Okay, so we get items on our City Council agenda and we're told to vote and we're given a recommendation by the city staff, but we also often are not privy to any of the circumstances or discussions that led up to this policy. Now, sometimes it's benign, right? We receive the grant, we have to vote yes to receive this grant. On Tuesday, the example is, MDOT said they'd give us $20,000 to trim back trees on Broad Street. Okay, fine, we don't need to know a whole lot about that, maybe. Personally, I would like to be in every one of these types of discussions, but we are not really considered part of the city operations, okay? We just come to vote to check yes on everything. How much time do I put in? I'm probably putting in 10 to 15 hours a week responding to emails, reading the packet, which is sometimes nearly 200 pages every two weeks. This is another, you know, think of Congress, you know, five days before the budget deadline. No, five days, that would be a blessing. Five hours before the budget deadline. Yeah, here's the omnibus, we wanna spend $4.6 trillion. You have 30 seconds to decide or we're gonna kick you out of the party and you're not gonna receive funding for your campaign. Okay, it's not quite that dramatic, but we get these huge packets. And to really go through them and understand not only what's said in the packet, but the statutes that they're relying on, the city ordinance that they're relying on, the policy recommendations, you need to do a lot of research. But a part-time city councilman is not gonna do that research, okay? But a part-time city councilman is not gonna do that research, okay? I happen to have a career that allows me a lot of leisure, if you wanna call it that, to explore these issues. But you, you don't have to do a lot, but I try to put in the research to really know what I'm voting on. The other thing would be constituent services, I'm pointing towards CJ here. Okay, we pass a policy. It looks good on paper, we don't really know exactly how it's gonna be administered, though. Okay, so CJ has come to me probably on three or four separate occasions now and said, hey, I know you did this thing because you wanted to help the citizens. She said, hey! After all that. No, but she should be mad in a lot of cases, okay? So we have to, I take these complaints, and we have to go and talk with the city in a committee meeting and say, hey, the way you're actually administering this policy that we passed is not how we envisioned it. Okay, so if the city council is absent, if they're not really concerned, if they just say, trust the experts, then you don't really know that the administration of the policies is always exactly how you intended as legislators. Right? So one of the things is going to the constituents when they have complaints and saying, hey, is this working? Usually they come with a complaint, and they say, this isn't working like I think it should be, and then we go and give guidance to the city. Okay, but because the city is a permanent staff, they don't always have to follow that guidance. So sometimes we then have to change the policy again to get them to follow the guidance that we want. Yes?
You mentioned law enforcement before. I wanna know what your feelings are on the jail expansion? Because we're told that there are like a hundred and fifty outstanding wards, because they don't have room to house people?
Yeah.
What, what are your feelings on the expansion?
Yeah, it's about five hundred active warrants, from what I understand, between the county sheriff and the state police. We might need a jail expansion. The underlying problem is that M doc, Michigan Department of Corrections, is constantly raising the standards that are required to put people in state prison, okay? Because they don't wanna pay for it, right? The jail should be basically short-term housing for people who commit minor crimes, or a place to house people on the way to M doc, right? But because so many violent felonies even, in many cases, are being given time served or a week in jail, we are housing people, and then we're not sending them to M doc, and then our guys arrest them again. And this process repeats. Okay, so we might need a jail expansion because of the failure of the state. Ideally, we would get a legislature that says, no, if you commit a violent crime with a firearm and you're high on drugs, you're going to prison for a substantial amount of time, right? You're not gonna go get therapy, you're not gonna go get counseling, you're gonna go to prison. But because we don't have that, there's this backlog. Also, part of the issue in the courts generally is, everything takes an absurd amount of time. Have you heard of the right to a speedy and public trial? Okay? We need to get back to this. I mean, even in, you know, fifty, a hundred years ago, it was the case that you could take something to trial, you present your evidence in a day or two, the defense presents their evidence in a day or two, the jury deliberates for a day. Maybe we're talking a couple weeks for serious felonies used to be the standard. Now we're waiting months and months, and we're holding people in the meantime. So I think it might, it might be the case that we need it, but it's like one of these things where we're submitting to it because of all of the structural issues with the courts, with the states, and it just ends up that the county has to do something that really properly belongs to the, to the state government.
Yeah, I'd just like to go back in history, in the eighteen nineties, there was a man in Hudson, Michigan. He murdered his wife on Tuesday, he was in Jackson Prison on Thursday. So that's something you don't see today.
Yeah, right? Quick, what was this, this whole case with Mrs. Warner? Is that her name? I mean, we're in year four now, or something like that? I understand it was a complex investigation, but this is gonna go on for years, you can be certain of that. And then there will be appeals, I mean, this could go on for a decade. Millions of dollars in legal fees, and we'll see if we get justice, hopefully we do.
Part of the thing, as you're talking with the jail expansion, there are things that are out of our control.
Yes.
There's a lot of things that are in our control. But you have to have people smarter than up there to be able to identify and do it.
Yeah.
One of our problems. This whole thing, we went through a three-year period before all this was going on, where we had eight hundred and forty-one felony convictions without one jury trial. So we do have a culture within Hillsdale where we had a gentleman that, he's not here, but he supports us, that they arrested him, they didn't even have enough probable cause to arrest him. And his Sixth Amendment right was so violated that he waited eighteen months, and they told him it was gonna be even longer for a jury trial, so being on probation where it's a one-size-fits-all, no matter what you're on for, you have to be on the color wheel, and they spin it, and if at three o'clock your color comes up, you gotta go pee in a bottle. And we know how unreliable that dick test is. And then they couldn't leave the state, so there's all these restrictions on somebody to get them to a point where they just throw their hands up and go, you know what, I'll plead to something, pay the three hundred and fifty dollars and let it be good. So let's not discount the culture that we have here, that we allow to happen. Now, one of my questions to you is, can you, with the city issue, can you give me a short little dissertation of nineteen thirteen and Woodrow Wilson's ideology of the separation of powers? And what his ideology was in that?
Yeah, so Woodrow Wilson was a progressive academic before he was the President of the United States. He wrote a book that was critical of the separation of powers because it didn't allow the government to function, as he described it, as an organic unit. Okay, so the idea of the separation of powers is that human beings are flawed, that power tends to consolidate in bodies. And so the best way to eliminate that is actually just to take advantage of the sort of factious nature of human beings and put the bodies in a little bit of tension with each other. So we have one government with three bodies, and they, they push off of each other, right? They, they resist each other. Even today, in our corrupt state, separation of powers is still affording us some protection, okay? I know many of you probably are not happy with American institutions, but separation, without separation of powers, if we were like a British model, I think we'd be a lot worse off. The goal of Woodrow Wilson was to turn our system, you know he couldn't abolish the Constitution, people wouldn't allow it, to turn our system into a parliamentary system where there is one elected body, like the county commission, or like the parliament in Britain, and all of the judges and department heads and executive officials all flow from that one body. So there's no checks and balances, all of the power is consolidated in one body. We have the same situation here, for the most part, in our, in our local governments. Now, maybe a township doesn't need a bunch of separation of powers, they don't have a lot of authority. But I think on principle, it would be good if we could get back to the system of separation of powers. One way we can do this is, Michigan allows home rule charters for their county. We can make a form of government that is separate from what is required by state statute. We could create a form of government that says, hey, we're gonna have a large legislative body, drawn from the people by district, by township. You know, two representatives from each township, so we have forty people representing us in the county legislature. We get hands on deck, and they craft policy, right? Or they craft law, excuse me. And then we can elect a county executive, and they would enforce those laws, and there'd be a check and a balance there. Instead, we have one body that accumulates all the power, it both spends the money, or it both creates the policies and the laws and determines how to spend the money. You know, Jefferson Madison, they say, the very definition of tyranny is executive judicial and legislative power in one set of hands.
If I can, just to expand on that.
Yeah.
Woodrow Wilson believed that the people weren't smart enough to govern themselves. And he believed that it took an educated administrative state. So then people would vote on a board, or an executive, or a group, and then that person then would hand all that off to an administrative group that would take care of all those things, unencumbered by the people. And so now we have city governments with a city manager. And this is why our elected officials have no authority with the employees of the city and how they're doing things because we've got an administrator that is supposed to be an employee of the elected body, but has become the king of the elected body. And we've got the same thing in the school board. We've got a PhD, a file hiring deeper, that has become the king over the top of the elected board. So the elected board that is actually there to represent us no longer represents us because they've been neutered by an administrative state. The best thing that we can ever do is don't let it happen in the county and try to figure out any way we can to cut it out of the city, it's a cancer.
Yeah, returning to the separation of powers would be great. All government is gonna have some level of administration, right? That's, that's a necessity. But look at the federal government. The president should be able to hire and fire all of his department heads. He should be able to direct them like the boss of a company directs his employees. Instead, they say, well, I'm an independent head, I have to do, I have to do what I think is right. No, you don't have political power. In the same way, the city and the county should try to get back to a place where our elected officials can be held accountable, right? Because if our elected officials say, well, that was the manager, then you say, well, what do I, why am I voting in elections? What can I do to change this system?
Or I only get one vote, I only have one vote.
I only have one vote, right? I, I love to fall back on that one, because I'm on the losing end of a lot of A1 votes. I only have one vote, right? You don't have an executive you can actually go to. If you go to Adam and you have a complaint with them, you're in a way looking in the wrong place, right? You should be looking in the right place. Adam, you're gonna do what the people tell you, or we are not gonna reelect you. And he'll say, I don't have a whole lot of authority over that because of the progressive innovations of the city government.
How is this hotel going to be run? A lot of people have been asking about that, I saw online and everything else. Is it open to the public? Is, how is this falling into the nonprofit umbrella of the college?
Yes, yes. The nonprofit umbrella covers the universe. I do believe it is gonna be open to the public, but they're gonna have a lot of rooms reserved, I would assume, for events. So when they have CCAs or talks like Jeremiah, they might have rooms blocked out for people who are there for those things. I believe there's also gonna be a restaurant and a ballroom, so they'll hold events there, they'll have catered dinners, that sort of stuff. So yeah, I'm not exactly sure, I don't know if the college is yet, because we don't even have a site in mind yet, we're in the very early stages.
Just, just as a consumer, if that is open to the public, that would be beneficial to me. I bring in four to eight people into Hillsdale every year from my corporate, from all over the country, that travel with me for my job, and I gotta put them in a Days Inn, and they get pretty pissed about that. Some of these people are, you know, my weight class in income, so this would be good for me, for what I do for my career.
Well, I have no objection to it being open to the public, I think that will help, you know, but I'm just appalled at the stalls under that umbrella.
Yeah, I mean, of course, in a way, I don't want anyone paying more taxes, right? If we were all nonprofit, I might support it. And I do support it in a way, it just seems like you can really go on and on with what exactly qualifies as, you know, a core educational service. But, you know, they're gonna be housing people for their talks, they're gonna bring prospective students, and so it is gonna be used for that sort of stuff. And frankly, the, the city tax on it would be utterly absurd because our tax rate is so high. Part of the, you know, the college might not like to hear this, but if we didn't have all of these loopholes, if we didn't have all of these exemptions for certain people, the tax rate could be an eighth, a tenth of what it is now. So if they went and erect a building and they say, you're gonna charge us four hundred thousand dollars in property taxes a year, or whatever it would be, just throw it out of number. We say, no, it's gonna be fifty. They say, oh, okay. But the fact that there are so many exemptions means we have to keep raising the tax rate on the people who actually are eligible to pay taxes, right? This is why I like how the founders approach it. If you are receiving a benefit from the government, you are paying for that benefit. And no special exemptions, no, no favorite groups, right? There's a reason we got titles of nobility were banned by the federal constitution. Very radical innovation in human history. No one gets an exemption, okay? In a way, the hospital, you know, we're back to the idea of a landed elite. The nobility, with their multimillion dollar institutions, zero taxes. The people around it, they pay the taxes to support the nobility. Okay, I know a lot of people are gonna be mad at me, I'm not mad at any of these institutions. Think of Trump on the debate stage. Hell yeah, I took advantage of a tax loophole, I'm not an idiot. I'm not mad at any of these people, it's bad government at the state level.
Okay, but you talked about then giving these exemptions from our property taxes to help the local little people, right? But these hospitals and these medical facilities pay taxes to the state.
They do, and the federal government.
And then they get a millage passed that we are paying the millage, that you know what they're gonna do with it? They pay their state taxes. So we are paying this medical facility, sorry, but whoever, whatever idiots voted for this. The villages need their brain examined because sat there and told the board, right there, county board commissioners, told them flat out, what is this gonna be used for? Well, what we've been using it for is to pay our taxes to the state.
Yeah.
So you want the people to pay more taxes so that you can pay your state taxes for our money?
Yes.
Even those of us who don't use your facility.
Thank you very much for your generosity, yes, I will pay more. Yes, no, that's the case all around. Lifeways is the prime example of this. Lifeways is the Jackson, Hillsdale mental health service provider. Talk about providing pharmaceutical drugs, encouraging gender transitions, all of these sorts of things. This is the locus of it in Hillsdale and Jackson. They receive federal Medicaid capitation payments. So when someone goes to receive service from Lifeways, they are paid a premium by Medicaid from your tax dollars. They receive state operating grants from your tax dollars, and they receive a local millage from your tax dollars. They are triple, they are the masters of these things. Again, I'm not mad at these people at all, they are using the system to the absolute best of their ability to benefit their own people.
So is the senior center.
The Hillsdale County Senior Center is similar. They get federal money through Medicaid and other programs, state grants, and then they get a local property tax millage. They know how to keep their hand in all of the different pots, yeah.
So they have one more means of money, through allocated money, local monies that come from our tax dollars too, so there's four points of money.
Oh, do we really?
We load, we give allocated money to the health department, CMH, senior center, I have to look it up, please, but that's allocated money right off the top.
The county commissioners do, from the general fund?
That's correct.
Amazing.
So then, also back to our county commissioners, we have no term limitations. If you look through the state of Michigan, and I've looked it up, I think we have, how many counties, eighty?
Eighty-three counties.
Eighty-three, so I think there's at least fifty with term limitations. Now, my question is, physicians were never meant to be retirement opportunities, right? Which we've made those retirement opportunities, they get MERS, right? They get health insurance, the best policy. We need to look at that as citizens. And then the third thing I was gonna say was, oh, and the hotel in relation to Kiefer Hotel, what are we gonna do with that? What, what's the current status of that?
Yeah, so they said that apparently they knew about the college hotel when they started the Kiefer Hotel project. The Kiefer Hotel is, I believe, only twenty-two or twenty-four rooms. They are expecting to have way more hotel spaces than need, but they're hoping that people will want to use the historic Kiefer because of its beauty.
Will the Kiefer be completed before the college hotel?
The Kiefer project was just extended again.
It was one or six years ago, wasn't it? Oh, no, that's when it was supposed to be.
That's kinda what I was saying.
Yeah, the completion date was pushed back to December. It's another one of those issues where there's not really any, the completion date is more of a guideline than a rule, right? So a lot of things in city government are just, well, yeah, that didn't happen, that's okay, another year. And it creates this process, and it, it sort of makes the council look unserious. We don't, we don't look like we really have any authority, we sort of dis- We don't, we don't look like we really have any authority, we sort of just submit to everything.
But the reality is, is just like they said at one of the meetings, is that if they, I mean, what are your options? They're in the middle of doing it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, it's not like they're gonna say stop, and they put a ton of money in that building, and that building would've fallen down.
Yep.
So it is a catch-22, and you try to enforce those things. Two things that I wanted to say. First of all, people need to start going to meetings, and not just because they have a complaint, or there's something on the docket, that's, I have learned so much by going to these meetings, just in the process of what you guys are trying, just the amount of information, and the limited amount of information that you're given when you're trying to make decisions. Um, and the other thing was, what in the world can we do to fight back against Lansing about this, this power? I mean, I am so against this, it's not even funny, and do we have any way to create our own power system in Hillsdale County in ten full weeks of the state?
Yeah, yeah, I've talked with other council members about this, right? Could we use the St. Joe's River for more hydroelectric power? We did purchase diesel generators, but these are expensive to operate, because diesel is more expensive than natural gas. So we've looked at these things. From the city's perspective, we need to get our own wind and solar farms to, to get our own power. The problem is, all of these things are fed into the public grid, right? There's no such thing as our power. Everything is fed into a grid, and it goes to all of the people who need that power. So we don't really have a way to become energy independent in the same way that a nation could become energy independent. I think, yeah, we probably could if we had...
No, I mean, as far as the public, as far as the need, like, say it is built here, but New York, oh, needs it.
Yeah.
Not to...
Well, and you even said, when they were talking about that grid, that this supposed thing in St. Joe, we're got, by the time that power reaches us, we're getting like an eighth of what they're creating. I mean, it's so inefficient, it's not even funny. So, I mean, we're buying into them creating something in St. Joe, we're supposedly getting that power? And we're not getting another percent of that power, even our percentage of that power, when by the time it gets here, we're getting a very small amount. And that's why the cost is so high.
Yeah, I don't think we can, don't call me on this, I don't think we can ever say for certain that we are getting power that we...
On a web day.
Develop.
Right.
Right, we're just getting power and we're paying for it by the megawatt, and it's never exactly clear where it's coming from. I think the cit, the BPU might have a sort of running list of where it comes from, but it, it changes so rapidly, right? We don't have our power source. It's a problem if you wanna be the independent people, of course.
That's, one of the things, we have to know history. Um, in the, in the early twentieth century, consumers came through and bought all of the little mill pond, hydroelectric plants.
Yeah.
And their promise was that when they bought it, that they would keep everybody's power at three cents a kilowatt, or, I'm sorry, one cent a kilowatt hour. Two years after they bought them, they went through and dismantled them all, because nobody figured out what to do in the contract, and government just let it happen. And as soon as they dismantled them, they jumped everybody's power to three cents a kilowatt hour. Now, that's history, back then. And of course, we also have to know our history on Enron. Enron was the other thing, this is the way power grids work, is all hooked together, everybody produces X amount of megawatts, they figure out how many are used in each area, and then that's divided up, and go, "Okay, well, you must've used this much power because of, from what we produce over what you produced." We had a plant in, in Lynchfield, it was coal plant. Well, we've gotta tear those down, because they're no good. Coal's no good. And then, when we wanna go to these wind and solar, that's the most expensive way to produce any electricity whatsoever. A gas-fired power plant, BPU built a gas-fired power plant, it's far more efficient, it would last fifty years before it needs major maintenance on it. And we've got gas pockets all over this country. We've got capped-off wells everywhere around here.
Yeah, that would require an extremely motivated political class, and we don't have that. But yes, uh, you know, that, energy independence is, energy is work, energy is production, energy is the basis of everything, right? So when Trump says the most important thing is drilling and getting energy prices down, that's not a hyperbole to get your vote for low gasoline prices. Without cheap energy, we do not have an industrial oner to come, it's that simple, whereas it archives, yeah.
Uh, this was a statistic I heard on WGI, it, it may be somewhat obsolete. The statistic is it costs 1.5 million dollars to put up one windmill. And all it produces is fifteen thousand dollars worth of electricity in a year, okay? That's why that industry is so heavily subsidized. Now, I was in a building in Lansing, Michigan, across the street from the Capitol, and the directory in the lobby of that building was all windmill companies located across the street from the Capitol.
Yeah, well, yeah, good for them, they've got a good grid going. Uh, yeah, wind energy, I mean, those things last ten to fifteen years, I believe.
Yeah.
They could never be disposed of or recycled, they're just gonna sit forever in the earth, they destroy the ecosystem while they're there. I think...
And the scenery is what...
And the scenery, right?
And the birds.
C.S. Lewis actually says that the role of government is to protect your family, your friends, and your solitude. And I think that's an interesting formulation of the idea of life, liberty, and property. You have a right to be left alone, but not just in the sense of not having people breaking down your doors, you have a right to enjoy the nature that God has given you. You don't have to live with megastructures towering over you at every turn. Feel a little peace and quiet in this world, a little just, you know, looking at nature, that'd be good for us. I think that's why I'm about now on all the solar and wind projects, because they're expensive, um, they require human slavery and destruction of the earth to obtain the products that are needed to make them. But maybe, you know, more, most importantly for us, they make our city, our county uglier, and they destroy our environment.
Two more questions for Josh, and I'll wrap up.
I just want, I just wanna remind the people that if you can't make governments, the county and the city, record their meetings, so they're available to be seen, um, forever, right? They're, they're up, you can go back, you can research. And then, some like myself also record them, um, just not as consistently. And the only way we're gonna change these things, if we can change things local, as Mr. Ratan reminds us, has reminded us often, if we get knowledgeable and if we participate. You go to any meeting, and unless there's a hot topic, no one's there. No one is there, I don't care if it's county, township, city, whatever. A handful, and it's usually the people running the meetings. The other thing is, is, I wanna tell a quick story that goes back a lot of years, on a city councilman, there was a zoning issue, we went to the councilman, we said, "What about this?" He says, "They don't pay me enough to deal with that." Okay, you heard what Josh makes, you heard the hours that he puts in. Would you be willing to give of your life and spend the time? Yet, we pay managers, the city manager wears two hats, he, he has some management, and Josh can clarify this, over BPU and the city, but he makes a hundred and sixty thousand a year, does he not?
I think it's a hundred and eighty.
About two-ten now, yeah.
Okay, we don't pay our elected officials anything, so they get the attitude, "They don't pay me enough," and perhaps rightfully so, and yet, we put up with, with that. Now, the council should manage that manager, but they're not getting paid anything, and they still have to work another job. So if we don't, if we don't get involved, if we don't learn these things, and if we don't do anything about it, we're to blame.
Yeah, yeah, very good, I mean, it's tough. The average age on the city council is something like sixty-five, I'm twenty-eight. So, you know, a lot of these guys are doing it because they wanna serve their city, right? They have noble purposes, they wanna do public service, that's good. Um, but you do need to be willing to sort of put in time that isn't gonna be compensated. Now, I have the rare condition of enjoying this sort of stuff, not the public controversy, I hate that, it's unfortunate having your name slandered, but I do enjoy learning about these things, I find it's just beneficial. Um, yeah, I will say, on the public funding thing, conservatives have gotten a little squeamish about paying public officials. I'm not, this is not a pitch for a race, you can pay me zero, I don't care. Andrew Yang had a proposal, he ran for president as a, as a Democrat in twenty sixteen, I believe, and he basically said something along the lines, "Our representatives, we should pay 'em a million, five million dollars a year." I mean, you look at the trillion dollars we spend on defense and all of these other things, that's nothing, a drop in the bucket. But if they're caught taking lobbyists' money, if they're, if they're caught for corruption, they're going to prison for the rest of their life, no questions asked, right? So, in a way, we need to incentivize good people in government, but we need to put restrictions on them. It's similar to the idea of term limits, right? The founders were not fans of term limits, because you need to become an expert in a lot of things, so that the managers can't govern you and tell you what to do. When you're termed out all the time, you can't quite become an expert and really get control over things.
That's true.
But that can, you know, term limits are a good short-term fix, though, because the problem is, government has way too much power. If government doesn't do anything except what it's supposed to do, who do you care what who sits there for forty years, right? So all of these are questions of prudence that we have to consider, because the government is so out of bounds, maybe we do need term limits, maybe we need low salaries, but that's not always the best thing to do, I think. Yeah, John Paul?
I, I, I have, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll bust it out and say this. In my class, one of the things that we study is Benjamin Franklin's speech, uh, in his argument against Hamilton on salaries as the executive. And he said, "There's two things that rule the hearts of man, avarice and ambition."
Yeah.
The love of money and the love of power.
Yeah.
He said, "Pus before the eyes of men, positions that are both positions of profit and power, and it won't be the gentleman of this country that will vie for the position, but it will be the bold and the violent that will thrust themselves in those positions with your rulers." Our problem is, we're paying them too much, we're giving them too much, they need to have stipends. That would turn limits itself, because if you're gonna go into government and work as an elected official, at some point in time, you gotta get out of there and go to regular industries, so that you can create a retirement. This is our problem. When they can stay there and have a retirement, or become lobbyists, or do all that other stuff, and all that, pay them stipends, you're having a lot less people there for a long time.
Yeah, that might be the case. My only concern is that, you know, the eighty thousand dollars we pay our state representatives, that's nothing to the millions they're getting from the lobbyists, right? So as long as the lobbyist money is there, us taking away their paychecks might not do a lot. But I, I agree with you in principle, right? Hamilton's idea that we need to pay the executive a lot, that's a little bit questionable.
Is Hillsdale Police Department, uh, gonna have their eight-hundred megahertz funded from the county proposal?
I believe it will be on that system, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I would sit, yeah, I guess I just assume so, but let me, I'll inquire.
You were talking about administration and managers.
Yeah.
I went to the July fifteenth meeting in Jonesville about that whole fourteen or sixteen million dollar debacle, is what I'm gonna call it. They don't have anybody from Hillsdale County to be a project manager. There was a dispatcher there that said, "I guess that's gonna be me." This is, a sixteen million dollar project should have about a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollar your project manager, you're gonna have change orders, who's gonna control the tower construction, and supposedly, it's all gonna be managed by Motorola.
Turned into a Kiefer project.
It's gonna be Motorola. And then, and the county just accepted all Motorola project management fees, everything, and they have nobody...
Wow, no existing property in the county.
From the county overseeing.
Oh, yeah.
That's ridiculous.
No, our governments are expert at turning over the implementation, the organization of things to professional organizations for a certain reason. The idea is that elected officials can't really figure out anything for themselves, they don't know what's going on, they need professionals to do it all.
And Schreiber does it with every single fire department, they come and say, "Okay, you need these power badge, you need these, uh, automatic defibrillators, you need circum chest compressors," and they just tell them, "Tupper, they did it in Somerset, not there, so the two are four hundred and sixty-seven dollars."
Wow. Yeah, yeah, that brings up the millage point, too, last thing I'll say, sorry, I didn't keep you guys for an hour, my goodness. These millage proposals are horribly written, um, I don't think any money can justly be raised off of these things, uh, even if you support the cell tower project. It said that we're gonna pay to decommission other towers, it said something about paying for parking lots. I mean, these things and other purposes, right? They all end that way, and other purposes. Okay, one line, "We need twelve million dollars to buy seven towers, they are gonna be installed at this location for this price each, and these are the people that are gonna oversee it, and if they don't do that, you'll know who you need to go to, um, you know, to find the political responsibility to kick deep out of office." These, these multi-page things are, are written to, as, as Machiavelli so nicely put it, puts it, "Amaze and stupefy the masses." That must be really enforced, right? Whether you agree with it or not. Simple, one-sentence millages, of course, our state legislature won't do this, uh, unless we get them to kicking and screaming, but plain language, right? Nothing in government is so complicated that it requires freddus that only philosophers and attorneys can read.
Yeah, but you've got a poor Al's now, too, that now they want a new building on Care Drive.
Yes.
They don't wanna house at the courthouse, but yet, Doug Eagle said he didn't want the courthouse to be torn down in the new one, because it's historical. But now, nobody wants to reside at courthouse, they wanna, if CMH is gonna get one, now Hotchire wants one, and now the court officials don't wanna be there. So what happens with that?
Yeah, the Hillsdale County courthouse, sounds like it's not gonna be the Hillsdale County courthouse, it's gonna be the Hillsdale County Administrative Building, and they'll have their new courthouse on Care Drive, along with the new, um, multimillion dollar building that Lifeways is gonna get.
You know what the best part was, though? Benzine, Commissioner Benzine took that plan and threw it on the floor when they ended it, it was priceless, threw it right on the floor, to see, didn't see face value, but that was pretty, that was one reason why it's good for the community.
Thank you all, I'm sorry to keep so many of you back. I want to...
I can close on tonight, folks. Reminder, fair move, uh, if you haven't signed up, if you think you might want to participate in that, please reach out to me. Anybody that signed up, I will make sure you get that scheduled, I'll get that to you by email, Facebook, or we can text each other. And, uh, that's, put it on your calendars right now, October third, for our executive meeting, uh, for kicking off what we're due to do in twenty twenty-five, FBI.